Good evening. I would like to call the August 27, 2018 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of minutes for the Safety Committee Minutes, regular meeting minutes, joint meeting minutes, special meeting minutes. Does any member on council make corrections, additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last four meetings?
No.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests, we have a couple this evening. We'll first start with Nikki Cousins, our annual visit. And please come up and just let's tell us a little bit about what you're going to do. This is our annual meeting to give support to the football team and let you and the students put up the banners and streamers.
I'm Nikki Cousins. I'm assistant high school coach for the Cheer Squats. And yes, we're just here to ask for permission to hang our purple and gold streamers, show our school spirit, just get some excitement going in town for our first home game that is September 7th. We will take them down when we're finished with our season. If there's any trouble, you can of course call me if you see any that we've missed. But we just want to hang those around town here.
Any questions?
I have a request.
Sure.
Couple of places that have, where you put them last year that are on white painted poles, the purple dye gets into the white paint.
Okay.
And so could you maybe not put them on white painted poles?
Sure.
Or find an alternate spot for those, a couple of places have mentioned it.
Okay.
So I thought, try to remember that for the year.
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Okay, great.
Anyone else on council have any questions? I think obviously the big concern every year is just making sure we get cleaned up at the end of the season.
Okay.
So with that, well, good luck and hopefully we will have a successful football season.
Yes, we're looking forward to it.
And I think we're also, there's also tailgating, get together with food trucks on the 7th.
Yep.
What time does that start?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Behind BCI.
Yep.
So that's something new this year, so hopefully that'll be a big success and hopefully they will win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are happy this evening to swear in Deputy Chief now, in a few minutes, Anthony Bizarro. So congratulations for getting a promotion and would you please step up to the podium? And please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Anthony Bizarro.
I, Anthony Bizarro.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Ohio.
The state of Ohio.
And will obey.
And will obey.
The laws thereof.
The laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The provisions of the Charter.
The provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of Belbrook.
The ordinances of Belbrook.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office upon.
The office upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
I need a signature and if we can have your better half?
Better half?
Please come up. Once you guys step out there where Louie can, Louie can probably rearrange the camera.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I would like to thank Anthony and the Fire Department for coming out this evening, supporting Anthony. He's been here for how many years, Anthony?
A lot.
A lot. I know what you mean. So thank you very much for your service and to all the other firefighters here tonight and good luck in the future. We have a great fire department. Moving on, public hearings and everyone can.
You can ask my agreement.
We're not interesting?
I'm sure it is.
Moving on, public hearing of ordinances. We have none this evening. We have one introduction of ordinance or Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-5 and ordinance amending ordinance 2017-14 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2018 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items. Whereas the city of Belbrook adopted the 2018 annual budget based on the best information available at the time, whereas additional costs have or will incur in some line items and reduce costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains section one that the 2018 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And in the body of the ordinance, there's all of the funds with the 2018 appropriations which totaled $7,698,266 with some, with 149,716 in additional revisions to the amended 2018 appropriations, $7,847,982. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. I'm assuming that a lot of those, a chunk of those additions for the water fund due to Upper Hillside, is that where that?
Correct. So I did, I did change the layout of this slightly from what council is used to seeing. Typically, it would just show the Personnel Services revisions, the other expense revisions, and then the total revisions, but I thought it was helpful to see what our original appropriations were and then what that did to the end with the revisions. Typically, I would also include in my previous position, in Yule Springs, I would include a sheet that would kind of give detail as to, you know, what the fund was, the amount and the project that was associated with that. So if that's something that council would like to see in the future, I can add an attachment to the ordinance that outlines everything. I think that that's helpful. But otherwise, I took a couple of notes, so yes, the $78,000 was contributed to the Upper Hillside project as a result of our last special meeting that we had. There were also some increases in various funds. There was a, there was a leave payout that hit admin and water fund. In the admin fund, we also, for other expenses, we had some additional IT and legal costs, $10,000 for a museum floor that was already finished prior to my arrival. And then we had some street striping and salt that came out of three different funds, street fund, State Highway Fund, and Motor Vehicle Fund. And then we did have some additional part-time police department wages. I did add an increase as a buffer and then I'll just kind of keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Questions on council? Mr. Schweller?
It looks good. These are kind of recurring items and the biggest item out there is of course the water fund, which we knew that was coming, so I think we're staying on track pretty well, so that's, that's good news.
And I know with the water fund, I actually missed that meeting, but that is the one fund that we can't afford to do that with and we haven't raised rates for how many years? Seven or eight?
A long time.
Seven.
And that, that increase in appropriations did provide quite a bit of buffer too, so I don't anticipate that we're going to need that full appropriation.
Yeah, and that museum expense was a big surprise.
Yes.
When we went to fix the museum, they found out there was no support under the floor.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, that was additional cost.
It was a have to.
There really wasn't much options there. So any questions?
Is the museum pretty much, pretty well fixed now or?
Oh.
Museum is never going to be really fixed.
Is your house all the way done?
No.
Yeah. No, it's an old building and there's always something to it. But that was a big one. The windows are done and then the flooring is done.
And they got the roof fixed, right?
And the roof is fixed.
Yeah.
The really important things on the maintenance have been addressed.
Windows were a big one.
Yeah. Yeah, the front steps are another issue, but the safety issues and the maintenance is, the big ones that we're aware of have been repaired.
Any other questions? This is just the introduction of ordinances. Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-5?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2018-5.
May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance number 2018-5 and ordinance amending ordinance 2017-14 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2018 to reflect additional cost in some line items and reduced cost in other line items. That was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one resolution this evening, Resolution 2018-BB. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Resolution number 2018-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas this council, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2019. And whereas the Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certified in action thereon, this council, together with an estimate of the county auditor, of the rate of such, of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council. And what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 billion, 10 mil tax limitation. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves section one that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and same are hereby accepted. Section two, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as attached hereto. Section three, that the clerk of this council be and she is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county. Section four, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And this is the annual resolution, I guess, certifying our tax levels.
Yes, we do the tax budget in July. They give us figures, we incorporate them into a budget, we send it off to them, and then they certify those amounts for use in next year's budget, so.
And this has no effect on the millages, well, I guess technically could on setbacks, but it's just looking at the property appraisal values and determining the amount, so. Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-BB?
I move that we adopt Resolution number 2018-BB.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt Resolution 2018-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city managers report.
Okay, since we haven't met for a while outside of the special meeting, I have quite a few things here. Fire Department is in the process of hiring a third lieutenant. This was part of the changes as a result of the additional levy dollars that we received. Third lieutenant will adequately cover all of the shifts with a person in that rank so that when they respond from mutual aid, a lieutenant is typically the person that's on the scene responding and there's a clear chain of command, so that will just get us up to having that third lieutenant which covers all of our shifts. So we currently have three applicants and I'm going to review those this week and then we will move forward with that. We also have an application process open for a new service director replacing D.L. Wilson. It was posted August 24th and it will remain up until September 10th. It was posted internally and externally. Upper Hillside update, so we're in the home stretch of that project, which is great. The biggest part was attaching the fiber to the electric poles owned by DPNL and that has all been, that has all been set. It's just awaiting final inspection and approval from DPNL. And then that will allow us to communicate with the pressure reducing valve pit, so that was one of the last big pieces that we were really waiting on, which held up getting some of those gravel trenches filled in, which those are now filled in. And then final paving is set for September 10th. It got pushed back a little bit. I know that we were trying to get it by the beginning of school, but we had a lot of rain and contractor, contractors got backed up as a result of that, so September 10th is the date for the final paving, thank goodness. 2017 audit should be finished in the next few weeks per an email that I got last week from the state auditor. I also received word that we've been selected to have our 2018 audit and the next four years' audits contracted out with an IPA firm. This is going to be really good for us because it, it cuts down on the amount of time that the state is actually onsite. They've typically been here for a few months. With contracting out with an IPA firm, they do most things remotely and they may be onsite for a day or two. So that's, that's a really, really good thing for us in our operations just internally. It's kind of hard to operate with, you know, a number of people taking up our conference room and things like that. So this, this should be, should be a good thing for us. And then we'll also have an opportunity to extend for another five years, which could make this a 10-year engagement, so I'll start that process, well, I have already started that process. I have contracted out with CPA firm Julian and Gru to complete the financial statements for the next three years. I know that there were some changes with Gatsby 75, which require pretty time-consuming calculations of post-employment benefit obligations. Mark had contracted that part out with LGS and I know that he, he had quite a bit of difficulty trying to get that final calculation from them. And that, that was quite the expense in itself, so for just a little bit of an additional cost, we can have the whole thing done by a CPA firm and it should really speed up that process as well. And it's a CPA firm that I've used in the past that's got a great reputation there out of, I think it's Westerville, Ohio, so it's, it's a good firm. Annual street striping occurred on August 21st, stop bars, crosswalks, and other street markings were repainted. And two events that are coming up, which are pretty exciting that I've been working, working on, the first is a community tailgate, which was already mentioned, September 7th from 5 to 7 behind BCI. Food trucks, DJ games, face painting, all kinds of stuff. It's going to be pretty cool. So I've been working with Charlie Odell, who's the new high school athletic director. He's a great guy to work with, so it's something for us to kind of introduce ourselves and get involved with the community a little bit more, even though he's been there for a while. Fall farmer's market pilot, the morning of September 15th, which is a Saturday here in our municipal parking lot, I actually had to cut off vendors, I have so many, so I'm really excited about that. We've got people that are going to be, I've got a few local farms, I've got an individual that's going to take orders for Thanksgiving turkeys, which is pretty cool, florists, coffee, baked goods galore, it's going to be really cool, so I'm really excited about that. And then one last thing that got added was, the mayor and I were both at the Fourth Friday Food Truck Event and they did a Hometown Heroes presentation. And that Hometown Heroes presentation, there was, one of our firefighters and one of our police officers were honored and the firefighter was Stephen Lawrence, he's one of our part-timers. And then the police officer that was honored was Lieutenant Stephen Carman, so congratulations for them, or to them, and it was a really nice presentation, so I was really glad that I, I was in attendance for that, so that's it for me.
Who organized that, the Hometown Heroes party?
Optimists.
Yes.
Yep, the Belbrook Sher Creek Optimists Club.
Who was the firefighter?
Stephen Lawrence.
I just have a question on some of these events, where's a good place to find out? Like a calendar, a itinerary?
Only reason I knew, only reason I knew about it was Facebook and a community webpage. So we have a couple of community webpages now. We have the Neighborhood, we have the Crime Watch.
Mm-hmm.
What else?
I actually started one for the city just because of that reason, because there's really not a good, I mean, we've got our website, but that Hometown Heroes thing was not a city event, it was the Optimists Club. And just like, just like the mayor, I happened upon it just sitting and scrolling one day and I thought, oh my gosh, like two of our folks are going to be honored, I better be at that thing. And so I just happened upon it as well, so I ended up, I think I ended up sharing it on the city's new Facebook page, but I did create one and I'm going to try to incorporate much more of that on our own website as well. There's a calendar function on our main page that I'm going to try to make sure is utilized in a, in a better way than what it has in the past.
It's like we have events in the parks, sometimes if you're not looking for it, you don't see it.
Yeah.
So there's actually a lot of things that do happen. And it'd be, it would be nice to have a one place to see what's going on or, on the calendar or something.
It's been attempted, but it hasn't, nothing's worked.
I think with the community webpages and people sharing, it has helped, but you have to be part of that webpage.
Mm-hmm.
Or Facebook page.
I know the Chamber attempted to do something and the schools had some things, but it, there was no one central place that you could have the entire community.
And we, we put stuff on those both of, or level one, you're only supposed to use the one for community events.
Community billboard, I think it's called.
Yeah.
And I know that I've been, I've been sharing things there too that are going on within the city, so I'm trying to make a concerted effort to at least make sure that anything that we've got going on, I can push out there and try to get people involved.
Yeah. So you're, you're going to try to do something on the Belbrook website?
Uh, yeah, I've already started to do a little bit more with that, so yeah, it needs to be reorganized quite a bit and so I'm, I'm tasking Dawn with that, so.
Okay.
Hopefully we can get that.
Website and Facebook page.
I'm doing the Facebook page. Dawn is the website extraordinaire, so I'm trying to get him to condense some of it down because it's.
Fragmente.
A little bit overwhelming?
It's massive. I mean, you hover over one area and it, you have to scroll down, that shouldn't be, so I gave him my ideas and hopefully that can be, that can be carried out sooner rather than later.
I just want to say, we're, I mean, the community's excited about the tailgate party. There's, you know, I'm on the football club mom's group and so there's a lot of talk about how, wow, this is really neat, you know, I wonder why we've never done this before, you know, and how did this come about? So everyone's really excited about it.
That's great. Good to hear.
Any other questions for our city manager?
Mayor, I would just congratulate city manager in giving the annual financial audit outsourced from Ohio to the IPA firm. We've tried this for a number of years, we've been unsuccessful. The first year she's here, she was able to get cleaned up and I think the maximum number of years it could be outsourced is in fact 10, so we, it sounds like we hit the green light to go for the max, so good job and let's hope it goes a lot better. And my complaint with the state coming in is we're always at the tail end. They always commit to being done, I'll be anxious if they're done in the next couple of months. We're typically done usually in November and then a couple of times they said we're going to get it done in advance in November, so it's October 30th. It's always been out, you know, full 10 months to audit the city of Belbrook, which is just unfathomable, so I'm glad you got that changed, so congratulations, good, good job.
Anything else for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee report service.
No service report.
Safety.
I just got a couple of things. You read our Safety Committee Minutes, we had a, it was, the topic was, we just, the Safety Committee and the city manager discussed alcohol being served at festivals and we just kind of brainstormed and make sure we're doing what we should be doing to make sure that those activities are safe. And so far they are, they have been safe, like Lions Club Festival went real well, there was no issues and so that's working out real well. And it's just the common everyday things, like, you know, your people that's serving are trained and make sure people are aware that if they get into trouble, they can get a ride, those, just things like that, that we just want to make sure that we continue to keep up the snuff and because it looks like we're going to have more and more of these activities and that's great. And most, the ones that I've attended, everybody's really had a good time, so we'd like to see that continue. And the only other thing is, I kind of made it with this story that August 21st, an officer was dispatched to South Main Street on a report of a cat stuck in the engine compartment of a vehicle. The officer tried to remove the cat, couldn't retrieve it. He suggested they take the car to a mechanic. Took the cat to a local mechanic where they removed the cat, ended up being a kitten. They said that the cat may have been in there a few days, so they took the kitten to a vet, had it checked out, it's very healthy, and due to circumstances, they decided to keep it. And they explained to me that they were really pleased the way the officer helped them out in that situation and it turned out to be a good, good thing, so thanks, Belbrook Police Department.
I like to hear good stories, especially from the police department.
I really do.
Because I usually only hear the bad ones.
That's right, and that's all I got.
Right, thank you very much for, Mr. Schweller, finance and audit.
Yes, Mayor, as a result of the last year's audit, we've been tasked by the state of Ohio to accept the quarterly financial statements. You'll recall, we did this at the first quarter. What you have before you in today's packet is the actual activity through June 30th of 2018 through our schedule. If you look at it, it looks like our revenue is tracking very favorably and of course we had a lot of tap-in at the Waterford, which is going to be non-recurring unfortunately, but we certainly budgeted for that, we knew what the amount was, so it's not coming as a hiccup. When you look at our expenses, we're, we're tracking very well there. The big expense obviously is the capital outlay, which is the Upper Hillside project and I think we're up about $70,000 higher than we thought it was at budget, but I think we've got some cushion in there. There's a pretty good chance that we're not going to spend the entire extra $70,000, but it's one of those projects that we have to get it done and whatever it costs at this point in time, we've got to wrap it up. And our capital's tracking very consistent with what our budget was and again, the biggest change there was on the Upper Hillside, which, you know, hopefully we're not going to have to spend all of that, but I think we're doing a good job with what the budget is. It seems like our budgeting is getting pretty focused, we're staying on track and so far 2018's turned out to be a decent year, so.
Council have any questions regarding quarterly financial update?
Good recap.
It is very good. Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept this 6/30/2018 quarterly financial update?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
End of roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to accept the June 30th, 2018 quarterly financial update, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Community affairs?
Uh, nothing this time.
Old business, new business. I think I remember now without looking at it, open discussion. I got it right.
Just hats off to firefighter Lawrence and Lieutenant Carman for the recognition by the optimists and congratulations to Deputy Chief Bizarro on his promotion. That's all I have.
Forrest?
I have nothing, Mayor. Two items, two quick items. If you, if you have not gone to the, the Belbrook Historical Museum, I suggest that, encourage that you go over there and look at it. I had a chance to go over and meet with the curator Judy Carr here recently and look at the exhibit just in time and there's, there's a fabulous array of timepieces that are, that are over there and that, you know, I'd encourage you to go, go take a look at and plus she likes to show, show around the place too, you know, which is, which is nice. The second one I have is, there have been recently a couple of calls and social media requests for issue regarding complaints about residents placing grass clippings in the street.
And this, it seemed to be that it was, it was a, it was a pretty, pretty widespread item on, on the social media sites most recently here. And then, and I contacted one of the parties and basically said to them that, you know, we encourage the residents that once they cut their lawns, to make sure that the grass clippings are taken back out of the street and not left there for a safety issue, you know, or a potential mechanical issue that we have with pumps and catch basins, you know, here with, here in this, in the city. So, I'd encourage folks to, you know, look at it and make sure that they're, when they, when they're done with their, their grass clippings and yard waste, they get it out of the street so it doesn't cause a potential problem for folks. And there is an ordinance for that, by the way, too. If you go into the municipal code, the ordinance is under miscellaneous items. 1060.07D is what controls it. It says that you cannot place that, those type of yard waste into, into the streets. That's all I have.
Alright. Thank you very much for listening.
Uh, nothing.
Dawn?
Uh, I'd just like to congratulate the Bel Brook High School varsity football team, who won their first game. It was an away game. It was against Tip City and the second game is this Friday. It is also away, but I don't remember where it is. But then the first home game is September 7th and encourage everybody to come down to the community event and tailgate with us.
Mr. Schweller?
Just want to relate to our chiefs that my wife has this app on her phone that she gets the latest and greatest updates from the lip sync challenge and she keeps asking me where the Bel Brook submission is out there, so pass on the chiefs. We're still anxiously waiting for that.
It's being talked about heavily.
I figured as much.
Oh, yeah.
It's creative conflict right now, but it's, it's being talked about.
Baby shark? Was it going to be a baby shark?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no insider information. Is that it, Mike?
Yes, that's all.
Only thing I have this evening is Bel Brook Sure Creek Chamber of Commerce Golf Island at Sure Valley Golf Club. It was supposed to be August 16th. I decided to postpone that because of weather that day and also in conflict with Lions Club and a bunch of other things. It has been rescheduled to September 20th. It's always a Thursday at Sugar Valley. It's a great event. It's $90 a person. That includes beverages and food all day. And so, if anyone is interested, want to see the new clubhouse at Sugar Valley, it's, yeah, Thursday, September 20th. You can go online to belbrooksurecreekchamberofcommerce.com, send an email, or sign up through PayPal. And that's all I have.
I'm sorry, do we know the Lions Club or how they did? Or did I come and talk to them?
Not officially. I think Thursday was an issue and I think they are looking at, does it really make sense to have Thursday when school's already in session? So, that, that may be a change you see, but clearly, that's up to the Lions Club. I think Saturday night went really well, especially with Spongeworthy playing and I know the police chief, we had no issues at all that I was aware of. I was not there at class reunion, but, so I, it may end up just being Friday and Saturday, but I'm sure they'll, they'll talk about it. So, I think they did well. Completely different now, be it good or bad with alcohol, because they can now actually make a little more money, just like the Sugar Maple Festival now actually makes money instead of breaks even, so. But I'm sure we can get a full report from them and maybe have them come in and talk about the pros and cons. The weather was, turned out pretty good, but the forecasts weren't that good, so I think that hurt Thursday night, but it was a good event. Good car show, a lot of cars, so I judge a car show, that was fun, but good event. With that, we'll turn it over to the audience. If anyone would like to get up, if someone would like to get up, you have five minutes. You need to say your name and address. I see all three of our attendees this evening shaking their head. Seeing no one jump up, does any of, remember any other member on council have any other business to come before us this evening?
No.
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.